Good morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Mesa City Council session for August the 17th. This is our first meeting after a few weeks off, so it's good to be back in the regular routine. We welcome Mr. Winkle back and excuse Mr. Freeman, who is out of town. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the city's assistance programs for businesses impacted by the construction -- oh, I'm sorry. The first item on our agenda is actually to review the agenda for Monday.
Right.
So I'm getting ahead of myself. Let's please refer to the document that is the agenda for Monday night's council meeting. The first various items are liquor license applications and, of course, a couple of great bingo applications, followed by various purchase contracts. Do we really need to approve bingo applications? That's kind of a throwback, isn't it?
The state requires it.
The state requires it. Well, thank goodness the legislature is busy taking care of us. Item six, various following resolutions.
They're in District 5 bingo.
Oh, is there a District 5 bingo event?
Yeah.
Well, then never mind. That's important. I enthusiastically support any bingo operations in District 5. Agenda item six, we have various resolutions. I know one of those is having to do with 6F, a First Things First grant. Should we -- maybe we'll circle back to that now. I think we would -- I'd like to hear more about what that is. Item seven, various zoning cases. And I know under items not on the consent agenda is the public hearing having to do with the east-west redevelopment areas, and I know that's on our agenda to discuss here in just a moment. Counsel, before we hear from Natalie on the one item, any other questions regarding Monday night's meeting? Thank you then. Natalie, would you -- Natalie Lewis, our deputy city manager, would you fill us in on this First Things First $50,000 grant? What do we need to know about that?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and welcome back. My name's Natalie Lewis, and I work in the city manager's office. I was asked to just put together a few couple of slides here just to give you an update on this program. This follows the efforts of the Early Childhood Education Task Force that you all pulled together, and basically, among their recommendations, they asked us to look at ways to leverage and expand existing resources, to identify grants, to increase capacity and access to early childhood education services and health services, in particular for our children under five in the community, and to create community awareness. And so First Things First approached us and have been working with us on this grant. And basically, if it's approved by the council on Monday, it'll provide up to $50,000 over the next three years. It'll allow us to hire an expert facilitator in early learning and health. We will be focusing on families with children under five, and we'll be working as a team to create some shared branding for cross-promotions and helping to expand that community awareness. It's an effort that does not require any direct city funding, but it will require some city staff time, so indirect staff time. The whole idea is to establish a system, a long-going, ongoing system, both for Mesa and the East Valley. We'll be inviting all stakeholders, and they'll be calling themselves the Early Learning Network. We'll be creating and using the facilitator, will be creating shared strategies and outcomes. She'll be looking at ways that this group can all come together, combine their resources, and find ways to create system efficiencies and to maximize the services that are being provided to the families and children under five. The city's role really is as a convener, and ultimately, we want to create a sustainable system that sort of works ourselves out of a job, though we will still be supportive and at the table as time moves on. So our next steps are to go ahead and finalize the grant with First Things First. After your action, we will retain the expert facilitator in September, begin setting the table and identifying who we want to be there. We'll be in touch with all of you to make sure that we're getting the right people at the table for the conversation. Our goal would be to begin meeting in October and then bring back an update to the city council in early 2018 to let you know what's been going on.
Thank you, Natalie. Questions for Natalie regarding this agenda item?
Thank you.
Well, yeah, great. It's always nice when First Things First wants to give us money, and this is -- I agree, this is a need that was identified in the committee that Mr. Luna chaired, that we have various silos of providers of early learning in Mesa, and it'd be good for everyone to talk to each other and know what they are and coordinate, so it's a great idea. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Natalie. I just attended the GLO conference, Hispanic-Elected Local Officials, made some contacts there. I'm going to refer them to you. There's some additional grant opportunities through the National League of Cities, as well as in LA on the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. There are some grant opportunities as well, so thank you for being willing to speak to those individuals and trying to partner with them to hopefully get some more additional funding for this program. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Now, back to where I was staring at this earlier. Agenda item 2A is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the city's assistance programs for businesses impacted by the construction of the Gilbert Road Light Rail Extension Project. I think we have Veronica and Tim. Thank you. We're looking forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, good morning. My name is Veronica Gonzalez. I'm in the Development Services Department. This program I'm going to be speaking about today is the utility voucher program, which is something I worked on during my time as executive manager. So to assist businesses along the light rail corridor that are impacted by construction, we implemented a utility voucher program to run during the summer months. The businesses, the eligible businesses, the program offered the eligible businesses a $150 voucher good toward their City of Mesa electric or water utility bills due in July, August, and September. To receive the voucher, the businesses were required to participate each month in workshops that were put on by Local First Arizona, who was our partner in this endeavor. In addition to participating in monthly workshops, the businesses had to meet certain criteria to be eligible for the voucher. These requirements are the same ones that were used during the Central Mesa Light Rail Extension as they ran a similar utility program at that time, but this time, we added water utility counts to the eligibility list. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? Mr. Winkle?
First off, thank you very much for doing this. I remember this happened on the first extension, and I believe it's a large factor in the reason why we had almost like a net zero loss of businesses along that line. So do you have any idea how many businesses will be using this coming up?
When we started the program, we had a list of approximately 120 businesses that could be eligible for the program. We actually just had our last workshop with Local First last week, and through that workshop, we had about 36 businesses, individual businesses, that participated in the program in June, July, and August.
Will Local First be acting kind of as a convener and getting the businesses together to work together and kind of, you know, keep that kind of team effort to keep everyone from closing?
Local First was our partner in this endeavor in that they made contact with all the businesses along the light rail. They secured the teachers for the workshops and, of course, set up the locations and provided all the information to the businesses along the corridor.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Are we working with the Chamber of Commerce at all on any of this as we go down Main Street? Because I know like we -- the city, I think, worked with the Chamber of Commerce to offer discounted membership to the chamber once before. There was something like that, but also, I want to make sure that we're accommodating the businesses. The construction is accommodating the businesses that are down there. I know that Brian Vivian's in the audience here, and he has a business right there where the construction's taking place. I want to make sure that we're not handicapping really a lot of the businesses there from doing their day-to-day functions.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we did not work specifically with the Chamber of Commerce on this particular program. It was really a partnership between the City of Mesa and Local First Arizona.
Okay. And then as far as like, are we moving barricades and accommodating businesses that need to be accommodated for deliveries or?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, that's not handled from this specific program. This is really kind of -- and we have one more piece of this we need to talk about this morning, but that is handled through with the contractor, and we stay on top of that. I know the contractor's trying to be very sensitive in accommodating those business access points. There's sometimes it is very difficult, and so we're trying to quickly go through there. But there's been a lot of outreach along the corridor to talk to those businesses, and we're, as a staff, we're just keep trying to think of ways that we can help provide some type of relief during these difficult times. So, Mayor, if you could, if we could, maybe Tim could kind of -- we have one more piece of this. So we talked about the utility side, which is, we actually kind of simplified the utility side from what we did down in Central Main Street Extension, and I guess we kind of learned our lessons to make it a little more simple. But we also have thought about, and it came to us, that we probably ought to look at another way to help some of our restaurants with their liquor license. So if we could, maybe Tim could. This is a new dimension, I guess, from what we did before, so maybe Tim could. This would be a new proposal, so.
Please, Tim.
Mayor, council, this is Tim Meyer. I'm a licensing administrator. One of the areas that was identified that we could possibly help on is a liquor license assistance program for the city fees that we charge for liquor licenses. We made it effective on 8/1/17, and we chose the area between Ashland and just east of Gilbert Road. It's the new area where they're expanding the light rail right now. It will affect all the existing liquor license holders and also the new liquor license applications that come through. Right now, that currently affects seven businesses that are currently in that area, and then we had one new application that will be coming before council on this agenda that we have right now. The proposed fee reduction was for an application fee reduction of 50%, down to $50. The issuance fee by reducing that by 50% down to $1,000. The annual fee will be brought down to zero from 500 or 550, depending on what kind of liquor license you have. Then if you need an interim license, that's when you come into a business and they already have a liquor license and you want to continue serving liquor, but you don't have your liquor license approved yet, you can apply for an interim license through us and the state, and there's a fee for that, and we're going to reduce that down to zero as well, too, or we're proposing to do that down instead of $5 or $550. So this is one area that was identified that's possible that we can help out businesses down the area, at least with the liquor licenses, so.
Great. So, Mayor, we're -- just wanted to make the council aware of these, make sure we're consistent with the philosophy of council. We've kind of heard from council about trying to help out these businesses, and this one just kind of came up, and you see there's a -- there's an applicant in front of -- was on the agenda we just reviewed, right? For a new restaurant or a new -- well, it's fairly new on the light rail, but a new liquor license, and we just, it kind of came to us, we probably ought to look at a way to help provide relief, not only for the new ones, but for the existing ones also. So that's what this program is, and we just want to make sure the council's aware of it, we're okay, make sure we're going in the right direction. If there's other opportunities, we'll continue to look at that and work to keep those businesses thriving, or at least surviving during light rail and then so that they're there after we complete the project, so. Just want to make council aware of this, make sure we're have the right, we're support from the council and move forward with this, so.
Thank you. I know I'm very in favor of what we're talking about here. I think we're all proud of what we've learned through -- this is not our first rodeo when it comes to building light rail on Main Street, so it's great that we've learned lessons from the previous experience. It's great that we had a net zero loss. That would be wonderful. I think we all need to put that up on our bulletin board as the goal for the extension as well. I'm not sure, you know, $150 a month is going to be the difference between businesses surviving or not, but if one of the keys is that incentivizes them to come to the workshops where they can learn about the other assistance that is there, and we can kind of work together to rally and help in other ways, the kind of suspending some of the liquor license fees, I think is a great idea as well. So thank you to staff for being proactive and looking at ways to help these businesses. And I'd like to say, I hope, I know this isn't the last or the only thing we'll do, but it's a good indication of what the city's good faith efforts are to try to assist businesses during the construction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we -- I think I have on here that is there's a motion to approve this.
Yes.
Does this require a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And Mr. Luna, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 2B, is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the creation of the east and west redevelopment areas and expanding the city's central business district. We're going to have Sarah Sorenson and Bill Jepiniac with us.
Morning, Mayor. Morning, council. Good to see you back. To get started, and I'll introduce the team here in just a second, but back in 2016, council gave us direction to look at three different redevelopment areas in addition to the one that was existing in downtown. And the first one was appropriately named, the southwest redevelopment area, and that finding of necessity was about a year ago, I think it was September, and we're bringing that back to you here in September, so next month, you'll see a little bit more information on southwest. Today, however, we're here to talk to you about the east and west redevelopment areas and what we have found in our studies. So let me get started by introducing the Matrix team, who's our consultant for the project. Celeste Warner is here, who's the project manager with Matrix. Felipe Zubia is here as well, and Felipe's really taken a lead role. In the front row, Karen Taylor Robson is here, representing the Matrix team specifically around the Arizona statutes and the legal issues that are here. Jeff Donahoe is here. He's an economist and really is one that has looked at the numbers side of things, so Jeff's good to see you as well. And I believe Kurt Waldier is here as well, and Kurt's picked up all the pieces that have fallen through the cracks. I think most of you know Sarah. Sarah Sorenson's been leading the effort from an economic development perspective as we've marched this forward. So, a couple of quick things before I turn it over to Sarah. The first one, as a reminder, is refresh your memory, redevelopment area is really a designated area of the city that's in need of revitalization. I think that's the crux of what we're doing. I mentioned the state statutes, they're cited there. They're going to get into more detail, but we followed that state statute very closely as we've walked along. So in general, the area has to show a predominance of the need for revitalization, and its predominance is probably the key word that I want to stress there. If we, if they have found that, then they will make a recommendation that one or more blighted areas exist, and the redevelopment of an area is necessary to interest of public health and safety. So that's the critical piece. Once the formal designation is made through a resolution, it is recommended that the council adopt a second resolution, which extends the central business district. And we're doing that to take advantage of the few economic development tools we have. One is called GPLET, Government Property Lease Excise Tax. Together, we achieve most, the most benefit from that tool. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah to give a brief history of things and take it from there.
So a municipality can have as many redevelopment areas as it would like. Mesa currently has two redevelopment areas. We have our Town Center RDA, which was established in 1999. It's essentially our downtown square mile. And most recently, we established the Southwest RDA last September 2016. As Bill mentioned, we just wrapped up the redevelopment plan for that area, and we will be bringing it to you in September. It's important that we go through this process of formally designating an area, a redevelopment area, because once this criteria is met, it allows us to easily target federal, state, and local resources to that specific area. Some redevelopment activities could include new construction, building renovations, beautified and improved streetscapes, neighborhood amenities, and GPLET projects at our discretion. Additionally, we believe that a redevelopment area will improve the quality of life for the residents and the visitors to the area. Revitalize the areas adjacent to light rail, which we see great potential in those supporting corridors. Within time, we believe we'll see some increased property values as redevelopment activities start to pick up. We also believe it'll attract new infill development and promote reinvestment to some of the more mature areas of our city. I do want to take a moment to address a common misconception about this designation. A redevelopment area does not mean eminent domain, it does not mean loss of property, and it does not mean compensation. The goal of this project is to reduce blight and spur redevelopment and adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized structures. So the map on the screen gives you an idea of what all four redevelopment areas would look like if council decides to create the east and the west redevelopment areas. As I mentioned, a city can have multiple redevelopment areas, but you will notice that they are contiguous with each other. Like Bill said, that is because we can only have one central business district, so we want to be able to apply that benefit across all of the redevelopment areas. With that, I will turn it over to Celeste and Felipe, who will be giving an overview of the blight study for the east and west RDAs.
Honorable Mayor and council member, it is a privilege, on behalf of the Matrix team, to present to you our findings and our opinion to provide to you regarding establishing both the west and the east RDA. What I'd like to do initially is just talk about the Arizona Revised Statutes 361471 very quickly. So the key with the statutes is it's very descriptive in regards to the process that a municipality needs to take, and there's two steps. And before you can actually establish an RDA, as you well know, we need to determine the finding of necessity that it is a blighted area. So I just want to, for the record, state initially, people may assume when you say blight that it is a definition that states it's a major slum area, and that's not necessarily the case with the state legislation and the definition of blight. And we're going to go into just a high-level overview of that. We thought that was really important. So a lot of people believe that blight is just visual. You know, they see that windows are boarded up. They may see trash along the sidewalks. So in addition to what may be a visual blight, there is a number of criteria per the state statutes that is non-visual, and those including, you'll see here on the slide, items like a faulty lot layout, and that would mean at one point in time, there may be some illegal subdivision layouts or lot subdivisions or dividing of the parcels, and certain lots may not even have access to a right-of-way to a street. So how do you develop that? So there's opportunity through this program to fix those and move forward. Another non-visual would be the diversity of ownership. So over time, a certain parcel or number of parcels, specifically a good example would be shopping centers, may have a number of different ownerships, and when you have different ownerships, there's a higher level of difficulty of bringing together a consensus to move forward for redevelopment and improving the area for improving property values across the entire boundary of an RDA. And another one would be like defective or unusual conditions of a title. So the key here is to present our findings, both visual and non-visual. There is another point we'd like to highlight is although there are within the RDA a number of parcels that make up an RDA boundary, this does not state that every single parcel is a blighted parcel. So it's truly what you heard both Bill and Sarah state, it's just you just need to show predominance. And the best part about it is the parcels that are not blighted will also benefit from the improvement of their neighboring parcels that may be identified as a blighted parcel, both either visual or non-visual. I stated a little earlier that the process is very descriptive in how we have to go about identifying the finding of necessity. We have a very collaborative team, subject matter experts. Felipe Zubia, as you heard, is our deputy project manager. He's done an amazing job in coordinating everything and taking a lead and working hand-in-hand with Sarah and other city departments, of going to hand it over to him to provide you an overview of the detailed, comprehensive process that we did take in regards to establishing our opinion of the findings of necessity and presenting that to the council for your decision today.
Thank you, Celeste. As Celeste mentioned, I think it's important to note that there's, it's not just visual forms when you drive down the street and you see something. There are other factors that contribute to what the state statutes call blight. So because of that, we take a very comprehensive approach in assessing the potential redevelopment area. So we start with an aerial survey to assess the area, kind of figure out the best way to do a field assessment, and do some initial survey of conditions. After that, we then do a field survey where we actually watch and assess each individual parcel, and in this case, of course, there was several parcels in the east and the west. In fact, I think close to 5,000 between the two. So we were able to do that within a week's period of time through some online mapping, through mobile applications, where we were able to go out and actually assess each individual property through a visual assessment. We then came back into the office and verified, one, that we hit the right parcels, and, two, further assessed properties that we can't do visually from a street right-of-way, because obviously, we do it all from right-of-way. We don't go onto private property. So once we do that, we then make sure we've got all of the conditions met. We also request additional information, as Celeste noted, for non-visual conditions such as crime statistics in the area. We also pulled code enforcement complaints for the area. And collectively, with all of that being said, I'm going to go ahead and go into the west and the east results here real quick. Before I do that, the boundaries briefly. On the west, we have the Tempe Canal, which borders, of course, the city of Tempe for the west RDA. That again matches up on the east with the Town Center RDA, all the way close to Country Club. On the south, matching up with the southwest RDA, and then the northern boundary of that ends up being approximately University Drive. So I'm going to quickly just go through the final summary of results, and for the west, proposed west RDA, we found that of the nine blight conditions, there was about 56% of all the parcels in the west that exhibited some form of blight. And again, it's important, I want to continue to come back to this, it's important to note that that doesn't mean that it is slum and it needs to be demolished. It just means that there's some form out there that continues to exacerbate the area and bring down property values. So with that, again, if we translate that and look into the actual percent of area, because we want to look at both factors, not just the parcels, but also the amount of area that's affected, it's approximately 80% of the entire RDA area that's affected, again, by one form of blight. Going then to the east quickly, as you can see, the east is, again, matches up on the west with the Town Center RDA, on the east with Gilbert Road, University to the north, and then Broadway to the south. What I'd like to point out, as many of you here already know, is Main Street is the alignment for the future light rail, so we want to make sure that we capture that, particularly for future opportunities for redevelopment as well. And in the case for the east, again, we did find that close to 60% of all parcels in that area exhibited some form of blight, which again translates into nearly 52% of the total area. And if I can really quickly point out the difference between the two, you've noticed on the west, we had a very high land area, 80% of the area, and that's because we have larger parcels in that area, large, whether it is townhome parcels or employment industrial parcels, whereas on the east, there's a lot more individual parcels, so that really is the reason why you find the difference in the total land area blight. But again, from our perspective, and that is our professional assessment of the area, we believe that the town, the City of Mesa City Council could find that both the east and the west exhibit some form of blight and can establish a redevelopment area for both east and the west, as currently described and defined here in the boundaries that we've proposed. That then kind of summarizes our findings. As you understand the -- As you understand through the process you've been before, there's a pretty extensive public outreach process that we're required to follow. That involves over and above what the state statutes require. The state statutes essentially requires one public hearing to establish the boundary. And in fact, what we do is we notify all the residents in the area. We actually host a workshop, which, again, is not required by state statutes, but we did host one workshop for each area. As you can see here, for the west, we hosted on the June 20th date. For the east, we hosted on June 21st. Through both of those, we had nearly 40 people in attendance through both of those. We also had a number of phone calls following up on letters that people have received. And by and large, I'd have to say, there was no overwhelming objection. There was some acknowledgement that there is blight in the area, so that was important to note. But I would have to say that probably some of the bigger questions that we got was, does this affect my property values and is there going to be eminent domain? And from the property value perspective, we emphasize, again, given our experience in this, is that property values are already negatively affected. Really, the whole intent of establishing this is to improve property values, particularly by improving conditions, revitalizing and redeveloping an area. And then, finally, on the eminent domain, I think it's important to note that this is not, in any way, shape, or form, an intent by the city to acquire property. And in fact, going forward, as the redevelopment area is established and the planning takes place, it opens up a number of redevelopment funding opportunities. And in that particular case, it is completely voluntary if the property owners want to participate. They're not forced to participate, and it simply allows property owners to take advantage of funding opportunities, redevelopment opportunities that wouldn't otherwise be available. So, that is a summary of our public outreach and really what we got. So, what are the next steps? We are about halfway through the process, and should the council find that the conditions are met and a redevelopment area is to be established for both the east and the west, the next step then is to go through the redevelopment planning process. That process will begin, again, if, in fact, the council finds that the conditions have been met. That'll be started here within the next 30 days, and then we'll be going through a process similar to what you've experienced in the southwest redevelopment area. And then, I guess, finally, we can open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Thank you for the great presentation. I've been on council several times and heard this presentation. But, Bill, why don't you speak to the, what giblets are and what they provide, how they incentivize redevelopment, if you would speak to that?
Sure. Government property lease excise tax, G-plet, not giblet like on the turkey. But, that is where you can actually have a developer who will deed the property to the city in exchange for, and of course, the city does not pay a real estate tax, they are required to pay an excise tax. And that's specified by statute, what that is by type of property and square footage. That numbers sometimes work to their advantage, and that becomes an incentive for them to redevelop their properties. Other times, in Mesa, because we do not have a primary property tax, we pay close attention to that, because as we have described, as we combine a central business district and a redevelopment area, you are eligible for up to a seven or eight-year tax abatement, seven, I believe, that is then, I guess, the real incentive for a developer to invest in Fiesta Mall or any other property around the city. The key, though, is, is it make, doesn't make sense financially, and that's a calculation we work with on a consultant basis. So, that's generally it.
So, have we've had anyone that's taken advantage of that since, I know, because we've gone through this process for several years now?
We have. There was a property in downtown at one McDonald that had a G-plet. Another one on Broadway, that is Crescent Crown Distributors, that's under a G-plet. There are other things called G-plet leases, so, and I'll let Jim explain some of that if necessary, but anytime you have a lease with, and I'll pick on Benedictine as a form of G-plet lease, that's not what we're talking about here. So, we've had a few. We have not had the problems other communities have engaged with. We've been very conservative in our approach, and really, this is putting tools in place to use it a little more in the future.
And have there been any changes on the G-plet as of late through legislature?
There have been numerous changes in the last, I'd say, 10 years. There was a change in 2010, I believe, and just a recent change here in the last year, which makes it very specific for its use. So, it is very narrow in how we can utilize it going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Winkle?
I have some questions, too, that have just kind of been asked over the time of Fiesta District and how they've, in the southwest RDA. So, just to be clear, labeling something as a blighted area or a CBD or RDA does not affect property values or make it go down, right?
Correct.
Okay. And as long, as well as G-plet, what other tools can be used?
Well, besides G-plet, which is state allowance, there's also a number of federal programs, particularly for brownfield redevelopment. What we find is that areas, particularly, let's take, for example, gas stations. They may have contamination on the site, so brownfield redevelopment, technical as planning assistance on the federal level is available, but also, on the local level, the city council can, in fact, establish their own programs. And a good example of that is a downtown program for Town Center that you've established for that redevelopment area to help businesses retrofit for sprinklers. So, there's a number of different programs from federal, state, and local level that can be made available.
And that would be through a general fund, expenditure? Pardon me?
The sprinklers work under a CBG.
Oh, okay.
And Councilmember, just to add to that, that's all written into a plan and presented as options, and then you get to decide from those options in the plan what to implement and go from there. Today, for the east and west, again, southwest you'll hear in September, but for east and west, this is basically just a finding of necessity. There is the study and the facts and figures that are out there.
Does this designation help developers only or landowners or what kind of people can use this?
Well, it helps all property owners, not just developers, but single-family homeowners. Again, there's HUD financing available to redevelop infrastructure in an area that may be deficient in infrastructure or have infrastructure issues. So, it certainly goes beyond just developers, I guess, is the response.
And to add to that as well, anytime you improve a property on the right, the value of the one in the middle goes up, the neighboring property. So, just by improving some of the more obvious properties, everybody else, so that the tide sort of rises all boats here.
So, is there a benefit to small business owners to kind of redevelop their property then through this as well? Or maybe fix if they have a bad facade or something like that?
Absolutely. Again, the ability to access additional funding and actually even financing on a federal level that wouldn't otherwise be available. And a lot of those programs specifically explicitly state that there needs to be some sort of economic distress, and that's really what, economic or blight distress, that's really what the redevelopment area essentially establishes, is that that exists, and so that, those additional financing and funding mechanisms are made available.
So, I only have two more questions. I drove the area that these maps were in, and we definitely need some help, you know, and a lot of it seemed just like, you know, abandoned cars, broken windows, things like that. What's the actual, what ratio did you find of broken windows and kind of small fixes versus actual non-visual blight that could possibly be engaged to, you know, as a community effort to clean up?
We actually have those numbers explicitly laid out in the actual report, and I don't have them here with me. I have the west with me, and I can give you those numbers, but I can certainly provide, in fact, Sarah and Bill can provide the report for you, because we go through and document each individual form of blight, all nine conditions, and we outline how many parcels of each one of those conditions have exhibited that form of blight.
Okay. Does part of this include some sort of outreach to, to kind of get the neighborhood involved to clean up those properties instead of, you know, I mean, like you said, when you fix one, you might want to fix the next, but what if the next one doesn't want to fix it? How do you?
That's a great point, and as Bill had stated, that really is the next step in the process. Right now, we're really focused on the technical aspect of whether or not blight exists. Once council determines that, we then go into that planning stage to develop or identify a number of different programs and opportunities that then the property owners can be involved in, really selecting what's best for that area.
Okay, and last question. Who, what was, what was the nature of the people who responded to the outreach? Like, what kind of people? Were they landowners? Were they developers? Were they business owners? Who were the people that kind of?
Primarily individual property owners. Some longtime residents and property owners actually attended as well, and so it was primarily individual property owners who wanted to be involved and had questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have one request to speak from the public. So, I'm sorry, are there questions for the panel? Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, please.
So, just to confirm, so today, we're just creating the RDAs, and at some point later, I'm assuming, we're going to come back to council and then present the options, right? We're not actually moving forward with anything specific.
So, you're creating a redevelopment area and you're extending a central business district is the action in front of you? You will be asked to then look at a redevelopment plan for the southwest. You will actually see that in September 11th, I believe it is. And then, this plan will get started in the writing phase and present the options to you to then evaluate that on its own.
Okay, great. And then, the only other thing I want to point out is to David's point earlier, can we bring statistics in regards to these programs that people have taken advantage of in the past, since this is an ongoing program and it's not brand-new? Is that possible? The G-plets, et cetera?
Oh, yeah. We can give you a list of the G-plets.
Sure.
Thank you. So, Bill, just to be clear, that the plan that's coming to us in September is actually the plan for the redevelopment area that we did a year ago.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
And so, as we go forward with this one, approximately a year from now, we'll have the fleshed-out plan for these, for the east and west, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Why don't you make room for one seat up there, if you don't mind? And I'd like to invite, William Frost has indicated that he'd like to speak. Mr. Frost, please come forward.
Mayor and city council, I appreciate the opportunity to hear concerning the RDA. It's not clear to me that some of the concerns of some of the residents have been fully addressed. Councilman Winkle raised a particular question, and that was what happens if a particular property owner, even after all of the presentations of financial incentives and everything else, chooses not to voluntarily participate? I'm not sure that it's clear what happens for that particular property owner. It's been stated that there's no eminent domain involved, and therefore, the city is not going to come in and take the property and improve it. If it's totally voluntary and they choose not to participate, or if there's a multi-title issue in one of these strip malls and all of them choose not to participate, some do, but one or two don't, then what happens? I don't think that's clear from the presentations that have been made, and so I just wonder if that could be clarified.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Frost.
Secondly, I have a couple of other issues, if I'm allowed.
Please.
One of the items that was listed on the state's list of criteria was the dominance of defective or inadequate street layout. I happen to live on Second Avenue, and ever since the beginning of the light rail through the city of Mesa, Second Avenue has become the alternative way of transiting from the east to the west side. I believe that many of those who reside on Second Avenue would say that is a defective street layout, and would hope that in the planning process, that the RDA may consider putting in some speed bumps or other kinds of activities to maintain an appropriate speed for residential area, particularly one where school buses stop and pick up and discharge students during the school season. And so, that's a comment that I have on that particular aspect. And then, lastly, what constituted the criteria for inclusion in the RDA? As I look at the map, as best as I can define it, properties on the, let me get my east and west correct, properties on the west side of Horn, on the north side and also the south side of Second Avenue are included in the RDA. With the exception of a vacant piece of property that's right along Horn and includes Second Avenue, those homes on the north side of Second Avenue are homes that one would never consider to be included in an RDA. Private residences, well-maintained, unfortunately for the county of Maricopa, well-assessed as well. And so, my concern is, is why are they a part of the RDA? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. We're going to address each of your questions.
Yeah. So, here, I'll take a shot. So, when we talk about the incentives for inside an RDA, typically, it's an application process. It's usually a developer, someone coming to us to request assistance to participate in a specific program. So, if there's a property owner who's not interested in participating, I mean, that, there's no pressure, there's no obligation, because, matter of fact, it's usually someone coming to us that's inside an RDA and wishes to redevelop their property and seeking assistance, and we work with them to make available those funds or to work through the programs. There are very limited number of programs that are actually available. There are some that have been mentioned through the federal government. The state of Arizona has chosen to continue to restrict and limit those types of programs. While they're still there, they're very limited. Most of them are directed towards redevelopment of commercial property. There are some available for residential multifamily development. So, again, it will be, it's purely a interest driven by the development, by the property owner. It's not something the city would ever compel anyone to participate in the incentive programs. It intended to be a tool for redevelopment to help work with private property owners who are looking to develop their property. And so, we look at it as more as a partnership and being able to bring the tool in. As far as the Second Avenue concern about traffic, we don't have to do that in an RDA. Matter of fact, we'll look at it right away, see what we can do to help out with some traffic mitigation, if that's becoming a problem because of light rail. We can appreciate that that flow may have redirected, so we'll look at that right now. And then, do you all want to speak to the, what constitutes the eligibility and kind of how we decided what to include in the west and east RDA?
I'm going to focus, I think, on the west side specifically at the moment, but for us, as we were looking at, how do you maximize the benefit? What's the parcels that are in need? What our limitations are by statute? We're allowed, you know, just so much in terms of square miles. As we walked on, we also needed to extend the central business district, and that has to be continuous with the existing. Otherwise, you have to choose which central business district. You can create two of them, but then you have to decide. Do you want downtown? Or do you want the southwest or the west or anything else? So, we were able to, it's, it does wander through a little bit, but you pick up parcels that, you know, are questioned, but it has to be contiguous at all times. And that's primarily what drove a couple of these pieces along the way.
So, Bill, it was contiguous so we could get to properties that we saw needed to be redeveloped. That may have necessitated us including some properties that obviously are not going to be needing to participate in an incentive program in the future.
That's correct.
But it was in order for us to keep things contiguous, and we used light rail on either side of downtown as kind of a corridor. I think we used university, am I saying that right? University. So, we were just trying to pick up opportunities for redevelopment, but sometimes, in order to keep it connected, we had to include parcels that most likely wouldn't meet the definition of blighted, but they, in order to continue the line going east or west, that's how we had to shape the RDAs.
That's correct. We picked up a church that, you know, I was questioning, but we had them be contiguous, and you can't just use the right-of-way, and I think that's a great example of how we're trying to maximize the benefit of it.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Are there any downsides to picking up the properties that don't need it? Are they allowed to take advantage of the program?
Sure, they would be if something came up. But otherwise, it really doesn't have any material impact. It's not, it doesn't get identified that... It's not, it doesn't get identified that because of this, that the assessor is going to pay different attention to their assessed values. This is really just to create a designation for the federal government. They have programs that speak specifically to RDAs, because there's been, they know there's been a process, as we've seen here today, or a determination need has been made that this is a specific area, that where you use blighted, but it means a lot of different things. But it needs additional assistance, it needs additional focus. And that's really all we're doing here is. And then beyond that, it's just, it's an opportunity for us to partner with property owners. It's not a compelling requirement. This is really just something that we've been approached by development outside of the central business district who would like to participate in programs. But because they're not in the RDA, we couldn't do it. So this has been, and especially along light rail, we saw this as an opportunity to extend. There's been some developments that council is very much aware of to the west of downtown that we've been working with property owners on compliance with imminent code health and safety issues, that the expansion or expansion of these districts has allowed us to take in that entire very distressed trailer court. And so it's going to help us maybe in the future, as we work with development, to offer programs that we couldn't do today. So that's really the intent here.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Frost, hopefully, that addressed some of the questions that you asked. I tried to make a list of what they were, and I think Mr. Brady touched on them. You're not forced to participate in this program. The Second Avenue street, you know, the way that's impacted that traffic is a real concern, but, and we'll, as Mr. Brady was saying, we don't need to have anything related to this to address that issue, so thank you for raising it.
I thought that the contiguous nature was important. It seemed to me that you could get that contiguous nature by taking that thing that went down along Horn, as opposed to including the residences that were on Second Avenue. So it caused me some concern that they were not looking at solely the nature of the contiguous.
Okay. Thank you.
I think they can take another look at that, make a solid problem.
Thank you. Maybe by Monday. For those who perhaps are watching on television and Mr. Frost was not microphoned when he made that comment, he was, clearly, you understand the need for it to be contiguous. You're questioning, why did we not go with a vacant lot on one side of the street to accomplish the continuity, rather than going on what appears to be a well-maintained residential side of the street? Is that fair, Mr. Frost?
Exactly.
Thank you. We'll address that either today or at the hearing on Monday.
We'll look at it.
We'll have it ready for you.
Okay. Thank you. Council, other questions? Now, this is set for a hearing on Monday, so to some extent, will be, again, another bite at the apple. If people want to come and ask questions or raise concerns, we'll have that opportunity on Monday.
That is correct, and I believe, Jim, this is a majority, or a simple majority, or do you need five votes on this one?
So one of them is a supermajority on one of the votes, and the other is a simple majority. And actually, the agenda says which one's which, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I'll note that it's a challenge to redevelop a older city that has some pockets of declining property values. And particularly in Arizona, we have precious few redevelopment tools. There are things that literally every other state in the union can do to spur redevelopment that we cannot do. One of the few things we can do is G-plet and some of the other tools that we've talked about today. And in order to do that, we first have to go through this process. For, I see a lot of folks in the room who might be here because they're concerned, because they're property owners, that might feel like you might be impacted by this. My observation, and I'm not a real estate appraiser, but my observation is declining property values are a reality in these areas. And the impact of doing this is going to raise property values. I've met with developers who have come in to talk about specific strategic pieces in our downtown and on the east and west side that need redevelopment. And the first questions out of their mouths are, what tools are available? Is this in a redevelopment area? Can I use G-plet? So in my mind, this is going to raise property values. This is going to offer up tools that now are not available. I don't see a downside to any property for being included in this. So like I say, it doesn't impact your valuations. And Mayor, again, I'd just say, it's voluntary. It's not, we don't compel anyone to participate in any of these programs once it's established.
So I'll just put that out there, and of course, we'll continue this debate, and any questions that might occur on Monday, there'll be a hearing. Mr. Winkle.
I think that for the residents in District 3 that I've talked to, the big concern has just been, can this be used as a pressure to pressure some, you know, landowners to sell to a larger group, or, you know, that kind of thing? That's the big concern.
I don't think, I don't see it as a pressure point. I think it's still an option for the property owner to make that final decision. We're not requiring, there's nothing recorded against the property at all, so it's really up to the property owner, willing buyer and a willing seller.
And there would be no advantage to the city to exercise condemnation, because once we exercise condemnation, which we can't in this case, but even if we did, we still have to wait a decade before we can even develop. So there's, that whole theory doesn't even play out for us. I mean, there's, it's not even a consideration, because we have to literally sit out a whole decade before we can do condemnation that results for economic development purposes. So that's, there's no feasibility in pursuing that at all. And we have never, I don't, since I've been here, that has never been a consideration. We don't, there's plenty of opportunities to develop parcels. We don't need to use that tool.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the presentation. We'll look forward to continuing this conversation on Monday.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilman.
The next item on our agenda is Item 2C, Appointments to the Independent Commission on Compensation for Elected Officials. Any questions or concerns on this? If not, is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Glover. Mr. Winkle, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item is Acknowledged Receipt of Minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Glover and Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, that passes. Next item is Information Pertaining to the Current Job Order Contracting Projects. Council, any question regarding those items that you've seen? Hearing none. Next item is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. We have been off for a few weeks. Mr. Luna.
Last week, I attended the Hilo Conference, which was held in Tempe, and most of our discussions were on immigration and NAFTA, which, the importance of NAFTA with Arizona and the impact it could have. So we're looking, so anyway, it was very, very beneficial. We had a lot of people from all over the country attend the conference, and that's great event.
Thank you very much. Other comments about conferences attended? I did have the privilege over the last few weeks that we've been off of being invited to participate in a program at Harvard that I thought was very beneficial, and I'm looking forward to implementing a lot of the things I learned there, as well as traveling to Washington, DC as part of the US Conference. Mayor's meeting with several of the Senate committee chairman on a lot of issues that are relevant to cities' budgets. I thought that was a very productive trip as well. The next item on our agenda is Item 6, Schedule of Future Meetings and General Information. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to get ready for totality next Monday, even though it'll be only a partial eclipse here in Mesa.
Totality, okay.
Totality. Some parts of the country, it will be totality.
All right.
The Arizona Museum of Natural History will be having their pre-eclipse party this Saturday, August 19th, from 1:00 to 3:30 p.m. So we invite everybody to come out to that pre-eclipse party. Just reminder, partial totality is on Monday, so be ready. Don't look directly at the sun. The next study session council meeting will be Monday, August 21st. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson.
As most of you know, I lost my father back on July 7th, and I just wanted to say that our family is grateful for, to the citizens, to staff, and to my colleagues for your outpouring of love and support. I couldn't be more blessed to have such a great family, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And again, our condolences. Met your father, he was a wonderful man. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.